Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 23. We're meeting at the high school just prior to a town meeting. So we have an abbreviated calendar. So is anyone here for public comment? I see none. So are there any announcements? I guess we've been so busy getting ready for town meeting.
Well, I'll make one announcement, which is that I wanted to remind people that the JFK 100 Centennial, well, I suppose that's redundant, but the 100 Celebration is on Monday, May 29. Our Memorial Day Parade will be a more elaborate fare than usual. And there will be activities at the Deal Street birthplace in the afternoon. And in the evening, there is a sock hop run by Jim Solomon of the fireplace. And in order to participate, you need to get a ticket. You can do that online. But it should be a lot of fun from, I think, seven to 10:00 in the evening. So it should be a great day.
Okay.
Can I add?
Yeah, sure.
That on the 29th, sorry, on the 29th, we'll also be doing a number of things. I don't really know the full details, but it's going to include reading speeches from JFK. And I'm going to participate and maybe reflect on the time that I actually met JFK, like two months before his assassination.
You're old enough.
I'm old enough and wise enough. I know about the wise enough. I didn't know about the old enough. It should be interesting.
We're going to hold the minutes of May 16. And the first item on our miscellaneous agenda is the question of appointing Selectman Nancy Heller to the Devotion School Committee. Selectman Heller is replacing Selectman Daley on that committee. And we need to notify the MSBA Mass School Building Authority of the change of personnel. So any discussion of that? I'll move that we appoint Selectman Nancy Heller to the Devotion School Building Committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of approving change order number seven to increase, it's an increase in the amount of $151,984 with Shawma Design and Construction connection with the Devotion School project. I don't see Mr. Wigley. Should I hold it?
I would.
Okay, we'll hold it. The next item is a question of approving executing a contract for the preparation of a strategic asset plan and major parcel study with Sasaki Associates in the amount of $175,000. Ms. Bruton.
Good evening. So Kara Bruton with the Planning and Community Development Department. You have in your packet the contract to Sasaki Associates. It's for two studies. It's for our strategic asset plan as well as the major parcel study. These are two long-term planning projects that have been funded for this fiscal year and actually a year prior. We are moving forward with both with one consultant. The planning board has been, as you probably know, looking to fill out their planning board appointments. Give the plug for them. And they are very worked with the regulatory piece of what they have to do. For this long-term planning work, what they've decided to do is form a subcommittee, and it does include a planning board member, Bob Cook, and also Neil Woszynski, Betsy DeWitt, George Cole from the Building Commission, Carla Banka, Capital Subcommittee Advisory, and Linda Roseman from Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. So the work, long story short, is going to start next week and go through the end of this calendar year, and we hope to be finished with both studies. I can answer any questions you have. In the meantime, I will hand out a one page of revisions in the contract that you're going to actually sign, which is different from what you have. So these are red line copies. There's a couple of tweaks between Town Council's office and Sasaki's interest that both are amenable to Town Council's office has signed off.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this contract?
So the timeline seems aggressive.
It is very aggressive.
And are we confident that we can meet the timeline, or is it more aspirational than?
I think we could get it done by January. We need to make sure that we, if we plan ahead and have very good public participation meetings set up, what we'll end up doing is going where the community's already having meetings, and that's probably going to be in the fall. But the contract is set up that we can feather one over the other, start the second study before we completely finish the first study.
Just to be clear, I don't think it's a huge deal if we miss the deadlines that are laid out in the contract. I just want to do appropriate goal setting and have people anticipate when it's going to be done. And if we need an extra two months, then meeting an extra two months. I'm more interested in the quality than meeting an artificial deadline.
I will move that we approve and execute the contract for the preparation of a strategic asset plan and major parcel study with Sasaki Associates in the amount of $175,000. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And let's go back to the devotion item. This is an increase in the amount of $151,984 in the contract with Shawma Design and Construction connection with renovations and additions to the Edward Devotion Project. Mr. Wigley, how are you doing?
Good evening.
You look very harried tonight.
I'm sorry for being a few minutes late.
That's fine.
This change order consists of five items. I consider the amount of $151,984 approved. Item number one is $5,801 to change sheet of applied waterproofing to latex waterproofing at the chance of the existing building masonry openings. Item number two is $1,575 to revise the concrete beam size. It's there number four. Item number three is an increase of $30,551 to revise the condensate routes from sanitary to storm drain so that the flow rate does not exceed 1/2 gallons per hour under the sanitary drain as per code. Item number four, $42,180 is to deduct base contract ATC controls, automated temperature controls, and add Siemens graphics and controllers that are compatible to the existing inside server located at Town Hall. And the final item, increase $71,877 to change acoustic ceiling tile material to lead version four, which for 74 rooms in the building, and that's $71,877. Both of these have been reviewed by the Building Commission, approved and also approved by the Board of Supervision.
I assume we're still within budget?
We are.
So if I say during our budget speech that the project is on budget and on time, I will be telling the truth?
Yes, it's on budget and on time as of now.
Okay.
Seriously, I expect that, unless we, I expect that the project will be delivered on time and on budget, but I always have, you know, we're another year away.
Right, okay.
But things are going well so far.
Things are going well. I mean, we have our daily issues and our daily problems, and we strive to fix them all and correct them all. So far, we've managed to do all that. But it's going fairly well, yes.
And you've been able to deal with the issue of the roof and the?
The dabbits.
Dabbits.
And we will be getting a credit back on that.
Well, kudos to you and everybody else, because this is a huge project, and to have it on time and on budget at this point, I think, is a feat in and of itself. So thank you for, to you and the team for being so diligent about it.
I appreciate that, and I do appreciate that, but I think it goes mostly to the team. I have the smallest role of anybody.
You're too modest. Any other questions or comments? I will therefore move that we approve the change order number seven, which is an increase in the amount of $151,984 to the contract with Shawma Design and Construction in connection with the renovations and additions to the Edward Devotion School. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Wigley. Next item is a question of approving a payment to Mario Susi in the amount of $11,436.29 for emergency water main repairs at Beacons Field Road. Mr. Papsturgen, and welcome, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, and on March 23 of this year, we had a major water main break on Beacons Field Road that required a shutdown of the water main. And unfortunately, by the time we were able to get the water main shut down, we lost a good portion of the road, the pavement, the underlying road base area, about 20 foot wide, 24 feet long. So it was a substantial area that got washed out. Fred's staff at the Water Division was very prompt in getting the main shut down at that point and getting it repaired. I did have the Highway Division also on scene to try to get the road backfilled and compacted, but it was such a large area that we needed to bring in a private contractor to facilitate repairs and repavement, paving of the road. Mario Susi is currently under contract with us now for patching, but in order to pay for this emergency repair through the enterprise funds there, it requires Board of Selectmen approval. Hence, that's why I'm here before you.
Was this, does any other work have to be done, preventative work in the area about water mains, or is this just one of those things?
We have, as you know, I'm the biggest forum about water system. We've spent millions and millions of dollars to have the best water system, I think, in the country. But water mains do break from time to time, and they break for a lot of reasons. And we could probably sit here for an hour talking about them all. I'm sure that all of you would fall asleep.
But we won't.
But in any case, they do break, and when they break, we make repairs that are permanent in nature. I was more concerned about getting the roadway back. That Beacons Field Road is a very narrow road to begin with, and it's very heavily residential. And we didn't want to disrupt the residents for too long of a period of time. So I thought it was best to bring a contractor in to get the road open quickly.
Tom?
So just, I think you said these dollars are coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund to pay for?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll move, therefore, that we approve the payment to Mario Susi in the amount of $11,436.29 for emergency road repairs. Kate, please correct the calendar. It's road repairs to Beacons Field Road. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And the next item is a question of approving an appropriation transfer for the Advisory Committee in the amount of $1,000. Ms. Goff is otherwise occupied at the Advisory Committee. I'll just mention, this is, they've run down their meals budget, and this is a transfer from the salaries to the meals budget so they can continue eating as much as they've been eating.
I'd keep them happy tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to suggest that we just do it.
And they have enough, the part-time salary budget is anticipated to cover the rest of that.
Right. And Melissa mentioned, Melissa Goff mentioned that she's actually transferred in more than they anticipate just to be safe, get them to the end of the year.
It's a large committee, you know, there's been a lot going on over this, during this fiscal year, particularly in the fall when there were historic number of warrant articles.
Oh, yeah. So I have no problem with this. So I will move that we approve the appropriation transfer for the Advisory Committee, which will be $1,000 from the permanent part-time budget to the meals budget. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Oh, Selectman Franco, sorry.
Aye.
One of these days, I'll get the.
My answer's the same.
Yeah. Selectman Green.
Aye.
And Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license. I'll move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Enunciation Greek Orthodox Cathedral of New England for a bridal shower to be held on May 27, 2017 at 162 Goddard Avenue.
And before you call the vote, I'll just say, I see the police department has reviewed the paperwork and sees no reason to deny the license, and everything looks in order to me as well.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have some late-breaking developments with warrant articles. So the first one is the Baldwin motion, Article IX.
Has the Advisory Committee voted on that yet?
Yes, I just learned that the Advisory Committee voted. And this is, it's in our supplement. It's titled, the, my name is on this thing. The, right, it's "Motion Offered by Neil Woszynski, David Pollack, and Fred Levitan." Quite an odd combination. And it's intended to be a consensus motion. The net effect is to appropriate a relatively small amount of money so work can continue in addressing many of the design and legal and political challenges of the site while we take a pause so that we can, one, wait for the Westfield decision, which is going to potentially have an impact on our analysis, and also look at some of the other land use issues, including the recent communication from the National Park Service, or I should say, a communication that was forwarded to us by the state that was written by an employee of the National Park Service, quite a circuitous way of getting such an impactful email.
And uncertified.
Correct. Without any kind of signature, you know, it was quite interesting that the Park Service would do business that way. But we will be following up with the Park Service, and we've also engaged with learned outside councils who specializes in these kinds of land use issues, and we will be getting reports in executive session from council. So the Advisory Committee, I've learned, voted to adopt the consensus motion 2401, which, given the way things have been going with this project, I'm very grateful that they adopted the consensus motion. The votes, the votes in Advisory have been quite close with Baldwin. And one of the, one of our rationales in bringing this forward is to, I'll say, set us up for success, because this was, this was, this was turning up, turning out to be quite a divisive fight at this town meeting, and until the legal issues are settled, you know, it was my judgment in working with Mr. Pollack and Mr. Levitan in bringing this motion forward, that if we're going to have a controversial warrant article, we should do it after the legal issues are a little more settled than they are. So with all that said, any other, any questions or comments?
So one thing I noticed is that there, now in the motion itself, there's a reference to an ad hoc Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee.
Right.
Is that added for legal reasons or other reasons?
No, it wasn't added for legal reasons. It was added to codify the inclusion of some Advisory Committee members, which is something we had agreed to and put in the.
In the explanation.
In the explanation. This was a negotiation.
As most things are.
Right. And this, that was one of the things that was negotiated, shall we say. Any other questions, comments? Yeah?
How much notice will we get for a special town meeting typically?
Well, that's a good question. The legal requirement, I believe, is two weeks, but prudence dictates a longer lead time.
Did you say about six weeks?
Yeah, six-ish weeks. You could do it in a month, you know. You know, a lot's going to depend on what we find out and how fast we need to move to keep the project going.
And is it on us to ensure that there's a quorum available?
Well, if we want to, if we want to transact business, we better have a quorum.
Okay.
So it will be, it will be prudent that we work to ensure that whatever we do, we do in fact have a quorum.
Okay.
Any other, yeah.
So what kind of a change we need to re-consider first and then take?
Okay. So we'll need to reconsider that portion of Article IX. So this is item 67. So the motion is to reconsider item 67 of Article IX. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I will move the, that the Selectmen adopt the motion that is Article IX, Supplement Two, the motion that is on supplement offered by Neil Woszynski, David Pollack, Fred Levitan. It will now, hopefully, if this vote passes, be the Selectmen's motion, agreed to by the Advisory Committee or vice versa. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. So on this item, we are going in agreement with the Advisory Committee. There is one item in the budget that we're not in agreement, and that is the town clerk's item for $80,000. I am not going to offer up a motion to reconsider, but I will give any of you the opportunity. So I don't see any takers, so we'll go in. And I have a paragraph in my budget speech making the pitch to vote for the Selectmen's motion. So, okay. Next item, I see former Selectman Daley here. Oh, no, we're not, we're not up to you yet. I'm sorry.
You can relax a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. So Article 10, Stanley Spiegel has a motion, which is, which is on a, I don't know, what is this called, glow-in-the-dark?
Hot pink supplement.
Hot pink supplement. Or the moderator, you know, he'll say things like golden rod, and I don't know what you call this.
Supplement number one?
It's.
I have to say black and white first.
It is supplement number two, Article 10. It's glow-in-the-dark, Selectman Green. So town meeting member Stanley Spiegel is offering a motion to refer the subject matter to the Board of Selectmen with a request that they explore the costs and other practicalities of publishing the town meeting warrants in the tab in basically a supplement similar to the League of Women Voters. So to study that, is there, I'm wondering if I should, yeah?
It's being debated in the House.
Oh, okay. So why don't, why don't we put this off? Why don't we go to Selectman Daley's, former Selectman Daley's?
Austin, why don't you just go back and tell Tommy that? We're going to defer for a few minutes, please.
Thank you, I couldn't stay away.
I thought you came to the wrong meeting. Your meeting's down there.
I'm keeping your chair warm for you.
Well, at your request, I chaired the Tobacco Control Committee, which many of you will remember. And the warrant article in 13 is the result of our work. And I, the Advisory Committee focused almost entirely on the effect on the merchants of restricting the number of permits. And I want to just go back over with you some of the health data, which is really what drove the work of our, do you want to take him?
No, no. You.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Smoking is the leading cause of preventable death in this country. Smokers on average die 10 years earlier than non-smokers. There are 480,000 deaths in the U.S. a year, including more than 41,000 resulting from secondhand smoke that are attributed to smoking-related causes. It contributes to asthma, cancer, emphysema, heart disease, macular degeneration. And more than 90% of the people who have a substance abuse problem, either with alcohol or drugs, start before the age of 18. What we found is that there is also a correlation between the number of outlets, the number of businesses selling tobacco products, and the number of young people who start smoking, and the reduced number of people who are able to quit smoking. So we moved in the direction of trying to cap the number of establishments that would have those tobacco permits and gradually bring it down to nothing, we hope. As you all remember, Brookline was a leader in taking smoking out of our restaurants, and we heard many of the same arguments of, well, our restaurants will suffer compared to neighboring restaurants. And in fact, the neighboring communities adopted the similar plan. Interestingly, today on NPR, I heard the CEO of CVS Health, and they stopped selling cigarettes in September 2014. And he was saying, now looking back over to a few years, they were, they had $2 billion worth of sales in cigarettes. And they now look back on it and are very happy with their decision. They said they were able to find other products to sell to make up that $2 billion difference. And they actually did a study a year after, they, for the year from September 2014 to September 2015, and discovered that overall, there was a reduction in the number of smokings in, smokers in the states where they had a significant CVS presence. So just by them closing their outlets, there was an overall reduction in the number of smokers. We are, of course, particularly, given the data showing how many people start smoking when they're young, and yes, there is also data showing that, because we have raised the age to 21, so you're saying, well, how do they get cigarettes? Well, you know, I think all of us who are parents can answer that question, but it's, they often get it from slightly older friends. Or, you know, I don't think any of them took up smoking, but both of my kids had fake IDs when they were that age, so.
May not have been for the smoking piece.
Yeah.
And I hope the statute of limitations.
I think it has, I think it has. So the CDC says that tobacco use is started and established primarily during adolescence. Nine out of 10 who tried their first cigarette, people who become smokers, tried their first cigarette before age 18. So that was the reason that we were going in a direction of trying to reduce the number of outlets. We came to, there were many people on my committee who would have, a majority, I would say, who would have liked to have seen us just say, okay, we're going to stop cigarette sales in Brookline. What we tried to do was come to a nice compromise version that would not unduly harm the existing businesses. So, and I will say that Elia Saudi, the owner of two mobile stations, who's So, um, and I will say that Elia Saudi, the owner of two mobile stations who sells cigarettes, told me he thought it was a very fair compromise. So that our version would allow them to sell their business one time, and there'd be a presumption, they have to go through the Health Department procedure, but there'd be a presumption that the new owner would be able to, um, get a tobacco permit for that one time, assuming they're doing the same kind of business in the same location. Uh, we would not allow subsequent turnovers after that. That is what the advisory committee has removed. They would allow an infinite number. So they're, they're, they would say, okay, we have twenty-one currently, that's the cap, they can keep redoing it, uh, returning these over as much as they want. Um, so they would not have any gradual reduction in the number of permits that our version would have, that the version the selectmen previously voted for would have. So I am asking you to stick with the earlier version that the selectmen voted, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Um, I see, uh, Mr., Dr. Jett, do you wanna speak to this, or?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you, folks. Hey. Well, good evening. Um, you know, I've had the opportunity to talk with the Advisory Council on Public Health, Dr. Schlaff. Just so you know, I was on that committee with the Institute of Medicine that actually developed the document in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen on raising, the implications of raising the minimum age to twenty-one. So I actually was on those ground level doing the test studies and seeing the years of life lost. Um, we are in concurrence and agree with, um, the original document that was drafted, um, and actually put in a cap, which is now twenty-five, on the retailers that sell tobacco, but also looking forward to the one-time turnover in order to reduce it. However, if you chose to go with the later version that was done by the advisory committee, that would be a compromise with us as well. Um, you know, we are looking forward to the impact there's on public health, and, um, something like this is definitely in that favor.
Okay. So...
I'm, I'm, I'm sticking to what we've got. So that's, I, 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 the, the stuff's poisonous, we know that. Uh, there's no question about it. And, uh, it just, it's, it's very painful to see young children, kids, teenagers, start smoking this stuff and then not be able to get off it. Um, and, um, so, uh, ask Arthur Conquest, who has, you know, ten thousand cigarette butts in his lawn, and, uh, clearly, uh, our kids are smoking, you know? I mean, I'm exaggerating now with the ten thousand, but it's a lot. So, um, I just think we should stick with what we've got. I think you came up with a good system, and it's not perfect because, you know, there's probably ways people can get around it, but I, I think in the end, it will help us reduce the number of permits from twenty-one to who knows, but, um, and, uh, yeah, that's where I am.
Yeah, I'll defer to Dr. Jett, that maybe drop to twenty-five now, I don't know.
Selectman Green.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna go along with the, um, um, article as originally drafted. Um, and, and the main thing is, uh, the fact that Mr. Audie is his name, uh, and apparently other members of the business community are on board with this. I think it's very important to, um, you know, get the people who are gonna be affected by our actions to at least buy in and accept the legitimacy of what we're doing. Yeah, I, I agree with you, the smoking is, uh, is absolutely horrible. Um, I've never smoked. I sometimes add the caveat, nothing illegal. But, uh, nothing legal. But, um, not saying that that's true, but that's my joke, okay?
You're on TV.
The statute of limitations is over.
I don't really care.
It's not even a day.
Yeah, right. Um, but it's about, so I, I commend the, uh, committee to, uh, for reaching out to the business community. You know, many times in this town, we don't do that, and, um, I think it's really unfortunate because, you know, we need to make sure that we, we provide that type of, uh, support to people being impacted by our decisions.
I just, I just wanna say, um, we did have a public hearing, and we had the economic development people send out notices to everybody that might be affected. And as you may remember, with last year's warrant article related to smoking, they came out in big numbers to object to it. Nobody came to our public hearing. I have heard since that, uh, I believe stimulated by, by the advisory committee, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce has come out against it. But as I say, nobody came to our hearing where we could've adjusted, you know, in response to their, their things. We didn't, and we did have a member of that community on our committee, so...
If you guys want us, Selectman Franco.
Actually, a question about the advisory committee's motion. So there's a couple of changes in here. One of the changes is the addition of a appeal provision to this board, should a license not be, uh...
Yes, or that?
Not be granted. I'm, I'm wondering why, why an appeal provision? What, what drove that?
I, you know, I actually talked to, and I, I don't know, maybe, maybe Dr. Jett wants to speak to this more, but I spoke to Pat Maloney, who, um, was dealing with these. If, if anything, I thought they were more lenient than we might like them to be. If somebody didn't apply within the, originally, our earlier version had them, if they didn't apply for their renewal within thirty days or something, they were, they, they were out. Um, and we, as, the version the selectmen voted on, I made some changes after early discussions with the advisory subcommittee, um, to make that a little more lenient. What I learned from Pat was what he would do is actually call somebody in, uh, for a, a hearing in, in their office if they didn't, uh, apply for a renewal on time. Um, they do run STINGS. Natalie Miller, who was the Health Department's representative to our committee, um, is, uh, the person that does sort of STING operations to see if they will sell to people under twenty-one. And, um, so, so that, you know, someone might get into trouble that way, too, in addition to not, uh, applying for, uh, their new, their renewal on time. But it seemed to me, from my discussion with Pat, like, the, the Health Department was not eager to strip someone of their permit, and in fact, was quite lenient, uh, on their way they handled it.
Um, oh, this is going to be very difficult for me to admit. Um, I'm probably going to come out, uh, not in support of either. Um, and I wanna explain why. There's a part of me that is very libertarian on this issue, and although I completely buy into the research and why smoking is very bad, until it is illegal, I don't know, I personally have a hard time restricting, um, products that we can sell and that people are free to purchase. I realize that I am probably on the wrong side of this issue, but that's how I feel.
Okay. That wasn't hard.
Yeah. I'd like to say one thing about, about that issue. This issue not only affects people, uh, people's individual health, it has a lot to do with, um, the diseases that are in this country and the, the costs in the medical system of caring for people. And the taxpayers pay that money to care for a lot of people who can't afford it, which I support, but you would prefer that they didn't get the diseases in the first place so that, that those kinds of, uh, costs would be reduced and the taxpayers wouldn't be as burdened. So I think it's not, not a clear issue.
Yeah. Oh, I did get a three-hundred billion per year total economic cost of smoking from the CDC website for those issues you're talking about.
Okay, I'm going to support... Go, go.
I, I want to, um, not support so much, but, um, to acknowledge, uh, Ms. Hamilton's libertarian position. Uh, I, I think it is important that we be aware of the fact that we can't really manipulate everyone's lives to be, to perfection. Uh, I think the cigarettes is an, is an exception, however, because of the cost to society as well as the, you know, well-known, uh, impact on, on health and, um, and longevity. But, uh, I, I don't think we should, uh, dismiss, you know, the view that, um, you know, we have to be very careful not to think that, you know, every, uh, imperfection in, in our lives has to be, um, addressed through legislation, whether it's locally or, or on a national scale.
Okay.
Fortunately, my committee wasn't in charge of anything else.
All right. I am, I'm going to support the original motion. I recognize...
The selectmen's.
The selectmen's motion. I recognize it does have some technical problems relating to the, um, definition of purchase and, you know, but I'm, I'm willing to live with that to, uh, promote the, uh, the policy of trying to reduce our tobacco licenses. I also think town meeting should have the choice, um, well, they'll, they'll have three choices, vote, vote the whole thing down, and vote either one or the other. That approach a policy in two different ways. So I think it's a good choice for town meeting to have.
The one thing I do like about the advisory committee motion is this, um, this, uh, change, the striking of, in the same location and change to a substantially similar business. I can imagine scenarios where a business is evicted from their space or burns down, and, um, they're not, they won't be able to, uh, to, to sell cigarettes or continue their business, uh, should this pass.
Um...
But I think...
We actually had some discussion on that, and we figured, you know, they can go to the Health Department for a waiver if there was an impossibility situation and, you know...
Does, does this give the Health Department the authority?
It doesn't specifically, but, it doesn't specifically, but, I, I, you know, some things are, if it's impossible to comply, you know, there's...
Is that a simple language change?
I, I have a feeling the moderator's not gonna take it.
Yeah.
It's the eleven thousand.
Yeah. Adjusting language on the fly is very dangerous.
I think that that, it's very unlikely, and, um, again, we do have a goal of reducing the number of permits, so if some bad thing happens, maybe, maybe it's fate and was meant to be.
Okay, so let's, uh, so I will move, well, it's a motion to reconsider, so if you, um, is it, I'll move that we reconsider and just vote no.
Okay.
So, uh, all those in favor of reconsidering, please say aye, if not, no. Selectman Franco.
No.
Selectman Heller.
No.
Selectman Green.
No.
Selectman, uh, Hamilton.
Aye.
Okay, and the chair votes no, so we're not reconsidering. Our, our, uh, position stands.
Thank you.
Um, to Stanley Spiegel's, he didn't wanna wait around, so...
We're being ordered at motion fifteen to ten.
Fifteen to ten?
Can I?
Sure.
So this was, uh, this was actually something that I submitted to the board, and you agreed to place it on the warrant, and it was, you know, it really broke the camel's back was, uh, the last town meeting where we had, uh, you know, just so many articles, and it was such a chore to, to actually put it in the newspaper. You have to understand, the, the newspaper doesn't accept these camera-ready. They have to actually input, retype it in, the whole thing. And, uh, you can imagine, they're not as careful as we are, and so it's just a constant back-and-forth of editing, proofreading. That, and then it costs, I don't know, what was the?
Six thousand.
Six thousand. So I understand it may not cost that much every year. Actually, Stanley's suggestions are, are good ones, and if, if we had to keep that requirement of doing it in the, in the full publication, we would definitely look at those, although I'm not sure it meets the publication, publishing, uh, requirement of the bylaw. But, you know, we still feel that it's a unnecessary requirement, given, uh, what goes on these days, and, and, you know, putting in a, a prominent, um, ad in the paper that lists all the articles as an index, maybe a little more than what we do now, just to make sure that people understand what these articles are, and then just say where, where they can locate, you know, where they can find, uh, either an online or print version of the, uh, of the warrant, we think is, is appropriate, but that's where we're at.
Selectman Heller.
I'm wondering if we could also, um, put, um, in this ad, um, sometimes I think people have trouble, uh, finding warrant articles, uh, because they may be embedded in the town meeting files or something like that. I would prefer, once the, once the warrant has been certified, or whatever you call that, authorized by the board, that we'd be able to put it on, in some way, a link to it at least, you know, you click on something, click for the warrant articles here, right on the front page, so that no one can say, well, I couldn't find it.
That should be easy enough.
And I think that that would go a long way to helping us, uh, make, make things easier for, uh, people rather than having to search through, um, the site, so...
So that's something we can do administratively.
Administratively, I believe we can, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix.
So I would hope we would.
So the reason I'm gonna vote against this is I think that there's some easy questions to answer. I think, um, Mr. Kluckner's point about whether this fulfills the notice requirement is one that's a simple answer to get. Uh, I also think, um, delegation to this board to figure out if, uh, if it's cost-effective to do this type of supplement is a relatively easy question to answer. I don't think we need to have it formally sent back to the board to bring it back to the town meeting again. I think whoever is speaking on this article can simply say that we'll commit to, um, to investigating this, and we don't need to vote favorable action. We can just put our word, uh, behind it and, and go from there.
Oh, but there's a, there's a, there's another motion.
But the, the other motion says, uh, just have a display ad with an index. That's the motion of the board.
We have to decide between those two.
Yeah, okay.
I think the board can also just choose to do whatever they want. If they want to continue to publish, they can. So it's just a matter of...
But if, but if...
So if the requirement's not in the bylaw, you can still choose to do it.
Right.
Right, but the by, the requirement, the only reason, the only way the, the requirement won't be in the bylaw if it's voted by town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I think we should stick to our motion, um, and whoever votes against it will, and we can commit to getting the answer, uh, from Stanley, but I have a feeling that because the bylaw requires the publication, although I suppose this, our motion took that out, um...
Well, our motion would have a new requirement, that it be an index.
Something different.
Yeah, it's something different.
Right.
In a newspaper of general circulation.
Right.
You know, at, at some point, I, I think it also, you know, it would be several pages, uh, maybe not twenty-four like the League of Women Voters is, but it'll be several pages, and that will get put into every single tab. Not that ma- I don't, frequently don't get my tab, actually. Um, and it's just such a waste of paper, it seems to me, that, uh, for people who are mostly gonna throw it away, um, I think certainly anyone under forty is gonna go and look on the web.
Yeah.
Or maybe fifty?
I read the paper, I'm under forty.
Um, you're an exception, we always knew that.
I'm a, I'm an exception, too.
So, you know, I, I think that, uh, it's worth, it's worth giving this system a shot.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with, with our motion.
Okay.
So is there any sentiment to reconsider ten? I don't see any, so I won't even do a motion. Okay, how about that? Live dangerously. Um, Tommy, I don't think we're gonna do yours tonight. We'll do the sign, and then I think we're gonna adjourn. I think, uh...
You suggest we do it tomorrow night, or you wanna talk about...
No, we'll do it, we'll talk about tomorrow. Okay? We're, we're posted for tomorrow, right?
Correct.
So, and, um, Sandra, I don't think we're gonna do yours tonight, 'cause we're getting close, so we'll, so we'll do the two policies tomorrow. Um, so let's finish up with the signed bylaw. This is Article Fifteen. Mr. Martino, what's going on? How you doing?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Tell us how we're doing. Well, what are we doing?
On time and on budget.
Right.
Um, so if you recall, I, uh, I appeared, uh, before the board earlier this town meeting season, uh, and you voted, uh... You voted favorable action on the proposed amendment and submitted subsequent to that the Planning and Regulatory Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, who saw a few issues with the article as it was proposed originally, worked with them to address those, primarily in the areas of notice to residents for any signs that would be administratively approved, appeals procedure for any signs that would be administratively approved and subsequently aggrieved by a resident. And they're also of the opinion that the zoning language itself should be more explicit around the types of signs and circumstances that a sign could be administratively approved, so effectively taking the guidelines that had been adopted by the Planning Board and incorporating them into the zoning language proper. So, I think through a couple of meetings with the Subcommittee, we were able to work out the kinks, and that's reflected in the Advisory Committee's motion, and I think you received that in your supplement. So, it addresses their concerns while maintaining the spirit and intent of the article, and will still offer the same administrative relief to our Planning Board if it's overworked.
Okay. You feel good about it?
I feel good about it.
Okay. Any discussions?
I didn't see any problem with it.
Okay, so I will move reconsideration of Article 15. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will move the Advisory Committee language on Article 15. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thanks much.
Okay, I think that's gonna be it for us for tonight, yeah.
Unless this occurred before I arrived, I think we should introduce and welcome Dr. Jett. I think this is his first...
Oh, he did?
Okay.
Yeah. Never mind.
Not tonight, he did it...
And I am going to introduce him to Town Meeting in general, along with Ms. Franconi, who's a first day... Our Finance Director, whose first day was yesterday.
Okay.
So, Dr. Jett will get the grand introduction. Okay, so we'll be coming back here when? 6 o'clock?
I don't read, you know?
6:30. Oh, okay.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yeah. It's gonna be tight.
So, what are my dreams, hopes, and goals for 2017 as they relate to this community, Brookline, Massachusetts?
Hopefulness.
To lose more weight and more exercise.
To have the best darn web series anyone's ever made, both witty and informative.
I'm Emily, and my hopes and dreams for the new year is to have a lot of peace, to have a lot of health.
For everyone to actually know their neighbors.
Where people...